Okay, we're live.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting of the City Council. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to get public input on the capital budget for 2021-2022 fiscal year and the capital improvement plan for the 2021-22 fiscal year through the 2025-26 fiscal year. So let's get the show on the road.
Okay, good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Thursday, May 6, 2021, at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Delory.
Present.
Councilmember Mandell.
Present.
Councilmember Trustin.
Present.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Assistant Corporation Counsel Joe Lupo will now have a salute to the flag.
All right, Mike, you got the big flag behind you tonight. Why don't you lead us in the pledge?
Okay. Hand over heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our only item this evening is a public hearing for the purpose of giving citizens an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the general summary of the capital improvement program for the five-year period from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2026.
Okay, so let's open the hearing. And I guess before we go to the public, I'll just ask quickly if anybody on the council has any questions. Okay, seeing none. Who do we have from the public, Dave?
Well, I believe we have Mr. Fabrizio has his.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. That's right. I'm jumping ahead. Trying to get the meeting over that much quicker.
Are we done? Okay.
Sorry, Joe, I was stealing your thunder. All right, I assume you're going to give us a presentation.
Yeah, Dave, can you put it up on the screen, please? Oh, great. Thank you, everybody. Um, yes, I hope everybody got a chance to go outside today. It was an absolutely beautiful day. My name is Joe Fabrizio. I'm the Commissioner of Public Works. I'm here tonight to present the 2021-2022 capital budget and 2021-22-2025-26 capital improvement plan for the City of Long Beach. Before I get started, I just wanted to thank all the department heads and the commissioners who helped me with this, specifically the Controller, Ina Resnick. She was really, just really, really helpful and I really appreciate it. And as well, the City Manager Donna Gaden, you know, they really, really, their expertise and professionals have really, really helped me here. Thank you. So if we can go to the next slide, thank you, Dave. Okay, the 2021-2022 capital budget and five-year capital improvement plan advances projects that improve the health, safety, and quality of life for city residents. The projects address issues in a priority order, making government more efficient and responsive. Projects this year include a continued commitment to roads and drainage, shoreline, transportation, improvements to police and fire assets, buildings, grounds, which includes trees and do plantings, parks, technology, sewer, which is a wastewater treatment plant and the rehabilitation of the sanitary sewer system, water, replacing our aging infrastructure and improvements to our water treatment plant, and other things such as economic development. Next, please. Um, as I mentioned, you know, this was my first, I've been working here for 30 years and I've assisted four commissioners on capital budgets, but this is the first one that I've done solely on my own. So I just thought, I wanted to take, I took a couple of slides to really just walk through the process because, you know, it was really an educational process and I don't know if people really realize how much work actually goes into it. So I just wanted to go through it real quick. In January, we basically send a request to all department heads and commissioners to fill out capital project summary forms. In those forms, we ask for the name of the department requesting the project, the project category, description of the project, project justification, an estimated cost of construction. In February, all of those project summary forms are due. In March, the Controller, myself, the City Manager, we start conducting meetings with all department heads and commissioners regarding their proposed projects. Next, please. In March, you know, during that same period, we also perform a comprehensive review of all the existing available funds from prior year capital budgets that are available and have not been utilized. This was actually probably one of the most interesting exercises that I had going through. I looked through all, every H-line from 2015 to present and it's probably a discussion for another night. But there was, you know, quite a bit of money that was not spent, that we're currently paying interest on, that was, you know, quite enlightening, that I brought to the City Manager's attention. And, you know, she was actually, you know, brought aware of it and we've had a lot of meetings about it since. In April 2021, additional meetings are conducted with commissioners and department heads prioritizing proposed projects. In April as well, the projects are selected and incorporated in the capital budget and the plan. By the end of the month, by the end of April, that is, the proposed capital budget slash plan is submitted to the City Manager and the Council prior to the hearing. The capital budget improvement plan is submitted to the City Clerk and it's made available for inspection prior to the hearing on the document. On May 6, which is tonight, we have the public hearing, so people can comment on it. After the public hearing, I will make any changes based on the comments that I receive. And on May 18, it's put before the council for a vote. Next, please. Um, this is a breakdown of the capital plan. If anybody listened to the budget hearing on Tuesday night, Ina, the City Controller, that is, did a really, really great job of explaining the difference between the general fund, the sewer fund, and the water fund. But the general fund is basically broken down, for the capital purposes, is broken down into roads and drainage, shoreline, transportation, public safety, grounds, parks, and technology. The sewer fund is essentially the collection system, the water pollution control plan and equipment associated with it. And the water fund is the distribution system, the water treatment plant and equipment. Next, please. Highlights of our proposed plan are asking for 5.2 million in the general fund, 600,000 in the sewer fund, and 4.3 million in the water fund. Grants where bonding is required is approximately 38.2 million. That number is basically the money, most of the money for the North Shore Critical Infrastructure Project that has a $33 million price tag. With the FEMA projects, you basically have to front the money and then you get reimbursed. The grants where no bond is required, 18.7 million, that's essentially the GOSR projects, the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery projects. With those projects, it's a little different. It's actually a great program. We don't have to front any money. The contractor basically submits his claim voucher and invoices. We submit them to the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery. We get reimbursed from the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery and then we remit payment within five days. So it's actually one of the best programs that I've ever worked on. And we have approximately $18 million under that program. Next, please. I wanted to take you through, and it's a little lengthy, but, you know, we've done a lot of work over the last year. I thought it was important to highlight that. So some of the successfully completed projects. One, the first one on the list, we're actually just about finished with. It's going to be finished in June. Anybody who's gone down Edwards can see it. It's the reconstruction of Edwards Boulevard between Park and Broadway. We've overlaid 15 streets, Wisconsin, Park to Ocean View, State Street, Monroe to Neptune, Broadway, Monroe to Lincoln, Broadway, Neptune to Roosevelt, Beach Riverside to National, Harrison, Lincoln to Franklin, Penn Long Beach Road to Franklin, Broadway Long Beach Road to Monroe, Beach Long Beach Road to Riverside. So we've really stepped up our overlay program and we're going to continue to do that. Parks and Recreation, if anybody's gone over to Veterans Memorial Park, we removed the existing surface of the hockey rink and put a state-of-the-art concrete surface. From what I understand, I'm not a skater, but it's been well received and it's really getting a lot of use. And we've installed a lot of water fountains at the Veterans Memorial Park as well. Buildings, right outside City Hall here, where we've designed and we're under construction with the rehabilitation of the parking garage. It's in progress. Things are going fairly smoothly right now. We're also, we bid out and we will be commencing work on the facade of City Hall probably in the next month or so. You'll see a resolution toward that project that basically involves repairs around the whole perimeter of City Hall to the Brick Mason Reef facade. Next, please. Sewer projects, most of the money that we did in sewer was emergency replacement of sanitary sewers. One was the intersection of Walnut and Lindell, which was a big project that we undertook over the winter. It was a collapse of the existing sanitary sewer, about 12 feet down below grade. And right now, actually today, you know, we had a lot of problems on this job. It was the north side of West Park between what, New York Avenue and Bramble Boulevard. It started out as a one location that we thought was, had to be replaced, but we've actually done three excavations in the last two weeks. And I think today we finally successfully completed that repair and the sewage is flowing and everything's going well. As far as water projects, we designed well number 19. I'll get into that a little later in the presentation. We demolished the 1 million gallon stand pipe, which was a, just think, stand pipe was over 100 years old and that had to be removed. And we did the design of, it's called the enclosure of the open air basins at the water purification plant. Next, please. Now, for this year, the upcoming projects, we have a lot of work on our plate as usual. I'm sure if anybody's driven around, you could see everywhere you go, there's, you know, there's some work going on in some fashion. Roads and drainage, we're gonna, the next in-house design that we're going to undertake is the reconstruction of Doyle between East Chester and Pine. We'll design that utilizing iron house forces. And there's money in the capital budget to reconstruct that roadway. One of the biggest projects that we're working on is the Drainage Improvements Project. That project has been awarded to JR Cruz for General Construction and Hink Electric for the electric. It's basically going to be, involves Park Avenue between New York to Nevada. They're going to be putting in a new stormwater pump station at Tennessee Avenue, as well as putting a whole bunch of subsurface drainage on that thoroughfare to mitigate flooding. On National South of Park, same thing. We're going to be putting in an entire new subsurface drainage system. It's actually going to mirror exactly what Edwards Boulevard South of Park is going to look like. So both, by the end of the year or February 2022, both Edwards and National, which are the main conduits from the railroad, are going to pretty much be identical and completely repainted. So I mean, it's actually a really exciting project. And the intersection Riverside Pine, we're going to be increasing the drainage by putting in new structures. Another project we're going to be doing is called Park Avenue Resilient Connectivity. The Department of Economic Development retained a $2.5 million grant to basically, to do aesthetic rehabilitation of Park Avenue between Long Beach Road and roughly Magnolia Boulevard. The intent is to overlay that entire area, which anybody who's driven it knows it needs it. We're going to be replacing curbs, sidewalks, overlay of the road, new lighting. So it's a great project. That's included in this capital budget. Oh, the shoreline, yeah, I've mentioned this project numerous times. Can't come soon enough. It's called the North Shore Critical Infrastructure Protection Project. It's a $33 million project that's 100% funded by, under the FEMA 406, 404 Hazard Mitigation Program. We're still working with the railroad to resolve some issues. That's the last hurdle to moving forward. We're hoping we can sign it by the end of the year. Next, please. As far as buildings, again, we're going to be rehabilitating the City Hall facade, which I mentioned earlier, and it's going to start probably in the next month or so. We have money to rehabilitate City Council chambers on the sixth floor to renovate the sixth floor bathroom to complement our recently constructed OEM building. We have funding for, to mitigate the exterior of the ice arena, as well as the Martin Luther King Center and animal shelter. As far as parks, you're going to see a resolution in June to replace the pool liner at the recreation center as well as repair the balcony wall. It's in bad state of repair. It needs to be repaired. We're planning on closing the pool in July to do that project. So you'll see a request for a resolution on the June agenda for that project. Next, please. Public safety, yeah, I've met extensively with the police commissioner. And incorporated in the plan is the purchase of three new patrol vehicles, which they desperately need, as well as gators that I think they use to patrol the boardwalk. Also, right now, we, I think we're going to have, from what I understand, our first female firefighter. So it's imperative that we give them the facilities that they need. It's also going to be utilized by the female police officers. So they're going to be running, installing a new women's police department and fire department locker room and shower. There's also a whole slew of upgrades, technology upgrades for the police department. The Commissioner, he can probably weigh in later better than I can explain because it's a little technical, a lot of the things that they want to do, but they're all needed from what I understand. And also a lot of work in the precinct. We have some funding to do some work in the, general work in the precinct. The fire department, this is a little mistake. This actually isn't supposed to be here. This is my mistake. As far as the ambulance, that's actually not supposed to be in the, it's actually in the operating budget. It's going to be leased. And the same thing, the PPE, the personal protective equipment, that is also in the operating budget. That wasn't supposed to be in this presentation. It will be removed from the, from the funnel capital plan because again, these are not in the capital plan. It's actually items that are in the operating budget, not the capital budget. So it shouldn't really be in this presentation, but it was an error on my, on my end. Next, please. As far as the water, you know, we have, we have a lot of work to do on our water system. The sand filters in our, in our water treatment plant, we have 10 of them. They haven't been addressed or rehabilitated, I should say, in the last 20 to 25 years. Our intent, we put $250,000 in the capital plan. That's the cost to rehabilitate two of them. We'll do two and we have in the budget to do two for the next five, two every year for the next five years, which will rehabilitate all 10 of them. As far as construction of new well and wellhouse, the design is underway. Right now, the city has eight wells, active wells in the city that provides us drinking water. They come from the Lloyd Aquifer. Unfortunately, three of them are out of service. Number 16 has collapsed. Number 17 is getting high saltwater readings and number 11, we're having serious problems with right now and we fear that it's collapsed as well. So of the five remaining wells, three are circa 1960. So it's imperative, I mean, it's a big chunk of the capital improvement plan. We have $4 million in there to, to build a well. My, my goal is, if this is approved, is to have it built by this time next year. There's a water system component in the debt, which is basically replacing the water mains on the new roads that we, that we reconstruct. For example, on Boyd Street, there's basically a water, a sewer, and a general construction component. So the water system component falls under the water in the capital plan. And high lift pump replacement, there's five pumps that pump the water at the plant. There's money in there to replace those five pumps that are, that are in need of repair. As far as sewer, we only have $600,000. Again, that's on another slide, but it's basically for emergency sewer repairs, replacement, and for our road reconstruction projects. Next, please. Now, this just, these, these next two slides basically give just a little more detail. It kind of expands upon the previous slides. It gives you a little more detail. I'm not going to go through them all in detail, but I'll explain like the first one and the second one, just to give you an idea of what I'm trying to present here. Like the first one is road reconstruction. I'm asking for $800,000 in new funds. There's $31,000 that current, that exists in our, from old capital budgets. So in other words, you don't have to bond for the 31 to certain bonded for. So we're basically, we're going to need $800,000 to be bonded. So that would give me 800. If you add the two together, in this case, you'd have $831,000. And this would go towards the Doyle Street reconstruction that we're proposing for next year. Overlays, basically, again, we're asking for 150,000 in new funds for overlays. There's 159 in existing. So if you totaled them together, we would have 300. Plus, we have money from, it's called CHIPS. It's, it's grant money that we get annually. And in this case, we actually have money from PSCNG to do some overlay work as well. So we're going to do a lot of overlay work next year. Our roads are in disrepair and we're really trying to be aggressive with that. Curbs, sidewalk replacement, 50,000. That's with projects. Like, I don't know if anybody's been in front of Bank of America or for J.J. Cooper's. You see a lot of concrete work done in the middle to replace defective areas. That's what that money is used for. That's basically to repair city streets and sidewalks. That's what we use that money for. Park Avenue Resiliency, I mentioned that earlier. There is a grant that's associated with that. So this 1,025 is part of the match that we need for the 2.5 million dollar grant. So it's important that we have that in there. A trolley, that's 68,000 is the city share from the Department of Transportation. 540,000, I should say, 40, 540,000 from the Department of Transportation, 68 is required from the city. As I mentioned earlier, regarding the police, we put in 1,028,500 for, that's three police vehicles, three gators, various technology upgrades, and precinct upgrades. The fire department, as I mentioned earlier, this was a mistake. That's not supposed to be on the chart. That is coming from operating now, so that, just please ignore that one line. The pool liner recreation, 100,000 of that is going to come from community development block grant money. So the city's obligation for that is only 15,000. We've received bids from a company called Renesis Construction for 114,700. So that $15,000 is to give us 115,000 that we need to build that project in July. Ice arena roof, we're requesting $800,000 to repair the roof. It's in severe state of disrepair. It needs to be replaced. This $490,000 requested to renovate fire department headquarters. You know, I've been in there. It's, it's way overdue. They deserve it. They need it. That's work that our beach maintenance department with their skilled carpenters is going to undertake. Next slide, please. Salt Storage Dome, this is another grant that we have. The grant is for approximately $110,000. We already had 50,000 of it available, so we're asking for another five. This is going to be a $55,000 match for a $110,000 project. New backup generator for City Hall. We already have 120,000 existing funds. I've gotten recent estimates from consultants that the project is more in the area of $250,000. That's why we're asking for another 130. Roofing, this is to address roofing in areas like our police auxiliary building and various buildings around the city. Tree planting, this is interesting. In order to, to, to build Edwards and National South of Park, we actually took the landscaping out of the project so we could come in on the, within budget to build those projects. We took it out, so our city forces are ultimately going to do this work in the spring and the fall. So that's what that tree planting money is going to be for. It's basically the landscape, National and Edwards South of Park. The fencing is 50,000, just for various repairs around the city. The next three are really related to economic development. Patty Born spearheading these efforts. You could certainly ask her if you have more specific questions about those. But it's $100,000 for Economic Development zoning study, the EAF slash EAS for zoning study, and also 100,000 for parking study. Sewer upgrades, that's 600,000. That's essentially for unforeseen repairs to the sewer system and sewer replacements on our complete streets projects. The well, which I mentioned previously, you know, that's probably the most important thing on this list, at least from my perspective. Again, we have eight wells, only five are active, three are out of service. Sand filter rehabilitation, 250,000. That's to do two in the coming year out of the 10 that we have. And 100,000 is for various improvements at the water treatment plant. Next, please. So in summary, we're requesting $5.2 million in the 2021-22 general fund improvements and 4.9 million total for the sewer and water fund. The breakdown is shown below there. The general fund is 5,251,500. The sewer fund is 600,000 and the water fund, we're requesting 4,350,000. That totals approximately 10.2 million. Again, it's, it's, this is a much, you know, it's higher than last year's and the main reason is the well. If you take out the well, you know, we're more in the range of what a typical capital plan is, but it's, it's a crucial project and I recommend that we move forward with it. Next, please. And that's pretty much it. That's my summary. I really want to thank, again, I can't thank, Ina really helped me a lot with this. I do appreciate all your help and the City Manager as well. Thank you, Donna. I really appreciate, you know, the time and attention you gave. This was my, the first one I did on my own. And I do appreciate everybody's input and cooperation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Joe. I think the big takeaway here is that we're doing a lot of infrastructure work across the city, especially on infrastructure that, quite frankly, desperately needs it. Been a long time coming. And I think the other thing that's worth noting is all the grant money we've been able to bring in to pay for this. I mean, we're talking tens of millions of dollars here that we're bringing in in grant money. So this is a very good news story. We're getting, getting a lot of things that need fixed, fixed, and we're getting help to pay for them. So, all right, before we go to the public then, I guess I'll circle back since I was, jumped the gun there a little bit and ask if the council members have any questions.
I do not, but I wanted to thank Joe for a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, great job. You guys, I don't think people realize how much work goes into these things. You know, all they see is the end product. They don't realize the months and months of work that go into getting us here.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So, all right, anyone else?
Not at this time, but I too just want to thank Joe and his team.
Okay, so, all right, Dave, why don't we move on to the public and who do we have?
Our speaker is Kevin Heller.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Heller.
Uh, yeah, Joe, great job. Thank you so much for the thorough presentation. Just one quick question. I do apologize if you made this point and I missed it. On the 1,028.5 on the police, it's all kind of grouped together, vehicle tech, precinct upgrades. I'm just curious if any of those vehicles now or in the future are hybrid or fully electric? And if so, is there potentially grant funding available for, for that either now or going forward in the future?
Yeah, I don't know if the Commissioner's on. Maybe you could talk about that because it's a little out of my expertise. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So the vehicles that we're getting right now are the ones that are off a state bid. Our garage really doesn't have the capacity to fix electric vehicles right now with a training. So we're staying with standard vehicles now. I actually have some, somewhat a knowledge of, really trying to look into electric vehicles into the future, which will be a recommendation in the future because the operating costs overall are lower. You don't have to pay for brakes. You don't have to pay for transmissions. There's no carbon, stuff like that. The issue we have though is the number of vehicles that you'll actually need for something like that, as well as charging stations. So you'd have to have vehicles where at the end of a shift, you'd have to have double the amount of vehicles because the cops would have to be able to get into the patrol vehicles, into other cars so that the cars that they use for the 12-hour tour would be recharged. So there are considerations. It's something that I'm definitely looking at for the future because I care about my planet too. So that's a great question though, Kevin. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. All right, who's next, Dave?
Uh, next is Roy Lester.
Okay.
Hi, John. Joe, thanks. Thanks for the presentation. Um, I do have a couple of questions. On the sewer, we are asking for new funds of 600,000, but it says here that we have already 1.4 million dollars' worth of funds in existing bonding funds. And the sewer will be taken over by Nassau County. And I understand the 600,000 is for the emergency repairs, but the bonded funds, you know, I'm wondering what that money is going to. And we seem to have a continuation of the sewer, the costs over the years. And I'm wondering what that is about. The other thing I wanted to ask about is the well number 19. Did we get bids on that for the $4 million? And well 19 is not working right now. Is that correct? Because you're saying we have eight wells. You labeled three that were not working, but you didn't label 19 as not working. So.
Well 19, I'm sorry, go ahead. Finish your question while I answer.
Yeah, because otherwise they cut me off. And on the police vehicles, it seems like the police vehicles, you know, we're spending 283 for the three vehicles, but then we also have allocated 200,000 for the vehicles in 2023, 200,000 in 2024, 200,000 in 2025, 200,000 in 2026. I'm wondering how. I'm wondering how often we're replacing the vehicles. The other question I have is on the economic development studies. That's 465,000 just on studies. It just seems to be a lot of money for studies. And finally, on the ice arena, we're talking about 800,000 for the replacement of the roof. And yet we only put in $3,500 on the ice arena for maintenance every year. Maybe if we put a little bit more into maintenance, we wouldn't have to be replacing an $800,000 roof or things like that. You know, I look at the well, the well's 44 million dollars and we have 19,000 put aside for it. We're not, you know, I guess it's the maintenance that's bothering me. It's like, you know, not changing oil in a car because you don't want to spend the money on the oil, but we end up then having to buy a new engine. Those are my questions.
I'll try to pick up as many as I can. Well, number 19 is the proposed number for the new well. So no, it has not been built yet.
Okay.
The three that, you know, we do have eight wells, but only only five are active right now. So three of them, one is collapsed. It's that's it. It's out of service. It's not gonna ever work again. Number 17, we're having saltwater issues. What happens is you pump it for like three minutes and you get these really high chloride readings that are wave out of, you know, outside the limits. And then within like two minutes or so, three minutes, it starts to, they disappear.
And that's the one we just fixed, right?
17, I don't know if it's one we just fixed, but we really, we can't use it to help the farm more let us.
Yeah, I know.
Well, number 11 is the one we're right on Pacific Boulevard. That's the one that wellhouse would recently would. That one, what happens is you pump for the first five minutes, it goes up to not 750 to 800 gallons per minute, and then it loses its prime, goes to zero. I've watched it happen. I've been down there. So we're in the process of, we did a TV inspection. They're gonna pull the pump and do a test pump there, but there's a very good chance that that one might be collapsed as well. As far as the sewer money.
No, no, I asked about bids. Did we get bids on that?
Oh, no, right now, it's we, the only thing we awarded was the design. That was at a previous council meeting. We awarded the design to H2M. They just commenced design. You know, I basically told them that I wanted them to hopefully finish the design by the end of this year. Then we'll go out to bid and bid, build it, presuming that this hopefully gets adopted. And build it in the spring of next year.
So the 4 million is just an estimate right now, correct?
Yeah, yeah, but I got that. That estimate is from H2F. I initially actually had 2.5 million in the capital budget before I finalized it. And they basically said that they, based on what's happening right now in the market, that 1 million is the realistic number. So, I mean, it could be less, it could be more. It is just an estimate. That's correct. You mentioned 600,000 for the sewer. And in the spreadsheet that we prepared, we do carry it out, 600,000 dollars a year in 2025. But if you notice, in 2026, we stopped. We don't anticipate, we'll be out of the bit, hopefully, we'll be out of the sewer business by 2000. It's supposed to be 2024, actually. But as far as this spreadsheet, I continued it until 2025. In 2026, there's nothing shown, I believe.
Yes.
Because we should be, I've been working, it's probably a meeting for, I could take up a whole another evening to work that's going on at the wastewater treatment plant. But we should be out of the business by 2024, 25. So you're correct about that. What was your other question? I'm sorry, you mentioned about the.
The existing, you have down the existing bonded funds of almost 1.4 million for this sewer.
Yeah, that's very, you know, that's interesting. That's, that's, that's one of the things I mentioned earlier in the presentation. I went through the exercise and and not just in the sewer department, but in a lot of the other budget lines. There was quite a bit of money that was bonded for but never spent. And I had a long conversation with the city manager and the city control about this, and it's something we're really gonna work on in the next, in the coming months that if it's not gonna be used, it's gotta be put towards debt service. Because I observed a lot of that and not just in that fund, but in technology and transportation. And you could see it on the spreadsheet if you look closely on.
Yeah, but Joe, what I mean, what I'm asking is, why do we need the 600,000 new money if we have that money?
Well, because remember, the six, it's only, you could only use the money for what it's authorized for. So if it says sewer repair in that line, that's the only, you can't use everything else that's on the sewer. It has to be designated by what's on the eyes, so to speak. So in other words, only the money that's authorized for sewer repairs can be used for sewer repairs. You can't use like replacing pumps in the sewer department for sewer main repairs. It's gotta be what it's authorized for. I mean, you could probably explain that much better than I can. But that's one of the things you gave me a very good education on. You can only use the money for what it's authorized for.
Okay, and I asked about economic development.
Yeah, that's something. I don't know if Patty's on. I mean, these are all.
Yes, Patty's available.
Yeah, she could probably describe, those are projects that, you know, she requested. I don't really have a lot of.
Dave, can you move Patty up so she can speak?
If you want, I can answer the question on the car while he's waiting.
Patty's not on.
Oh, okay. She just sent me a text that she could.
So I can answer, I can answer the question about the cars. So Roy, you asked about why we needed the money going forward. And I actually.
Run, I asked the 200,000 every year.
Yeah, going forward.
Okay.
Yeah, so maybe I just misstated it or the, so in any case, we, we right now are in a replacement cycle for our cars at 12.3. Every 12.3 years, our entire fleet will get replaced. Typical police car runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and basically is in motion 90% of that time as well. The average aging of a police vehicle in one year, one year is equivalent to three years of driving your personal car, 30,000 miles a year. So we are well below where we should be funded on that because we are really trying our best to take care of these cars the best we can. And we're recycling older cars by even replacing motors and just up, kind of giving them facelifts and uplifts so that we don't have to replace our cars as much. We're hoping that over the next three years, by replacing the three vehicles a year and our ATV fleet as we go, because they get pretty beat up throughout the year too on the beach, running a lot in the sand and in the salt. That as the city recovers financially, we'll be able to increase those funds to be able to make our replacement cycle. What's typically recommended for a police department and public safety is every five years for police cars. Your larger fire department trucks and stuff like that, when you think about it, they don't run 24/7. They sit in the garage and wait to be deployed. A police car is manned all the time, so we're well below the the industry average in cost for our fleet. We have about 37 vehicles and it's about 12.33 years to replace our entire fleet. Hope that helps.
Was Patty gonna come on or not?
No, she wasn't. So Roy, we'll get you the answer to that question. We'll post it to the website, your question and the answer to the website like we are doing for the generals.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thanks.
All right. Take care, Roy. All right, who's next, Dave?
That was it.
Oh, that was it? Okay. So, all right, folks, thanks for joining us.
Nope. James Lynch just raised his hand.
Okay. Might have just woke up when he, when he heard me say thanks.
Easy, Bendo. Good evening. This question is for Joe Fabrizio. Joe, first, congratulations on your move to the head of the DPW.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
Thank you.
My question is, four years ago, the city got a grant, I believe it was four years ago, to outline the infrastructure of the walks to replace the sewer and water lines. And as recently as last year, they came and the subcontractor came out and marked out the lines and where all the other utilities were going. And somehow this thing seems to have died on the vine once again. And I'm just wondering, are there any other areas of the city that have clay sewer pipes going back to 1923 that are still in use that have not been upgraded?
To answer the second part of the question, I observed it today on the north side of Park between New York and Grand. I, it's all clay, all tile, and it's old. So that's pretty much what exists throughout the whole city. I do have a map showing like what areas we've upgraded over the last like 25, 30 years. But to answer your second question, you are absolutely correct. That that pro, that project, it's called the Walks. It's basically upgrading all the water mains and sanitary sewer mains. And you're correct that it has stagnated, unfortunately. The consulting firm working on it is the Verken Wateruchi Consulting Engineers. They have yet to finalize the design after this meeting. I, I will call them to find out what the status is. It's, it's definitely been going on way too long. I agree with you. But you're correct. That is a project.
Okay, so Ben, can I ask this?
Right.
If you're gonna speak to them before the next or the ratification of this, this budget, can that be included? Because other than, other than that, we'll be waiting another five years to revisit this.
Well, it's included in a sense. Like, if you look under the water fund, I think there's over a million dollars in there. Unfortunately, I think it's 1.2 million. Hold on, hold on a second. Right, the under system upgrades, there's a 1.2 million in existing funding. That's not enough, unfortunately, though, for the complete replacement of the water mains because the intent is to basically abandon the four-inch water mains that run behind the houses and put new eight-inch water mains down the actual street and then connect all the houses into them. You probably, it's probably on the order of two to three million. So my intent is based on their schedule is to probably, realistically, is the next capital budget is to request, request additional money in that line, what system upgrades, to request like, say, another million and a half, 2 million. So we have ample money to do it, not next, in the following year. In other words, 22, after next July.
All right, but it's gonna stay on the radar. It hasn't died on the vine.
No, it hasn't. But you, I agree with you 100%. I mean, it is, it's, it's taking a lot longer than it should, I think, in my opinion. I agree with you. But we have to, what's the word, to get it to grow again. We have to, you're absolutely right and it's a valid concern, valid point. And I can update on that after I talk with a consultant, absolutely. But my, my goal was to actually, realistically, we're gonna ask for more money in next year's capital budget because this one is a lot higher than, than, than I wanted it to be. But the well is, is certainly a priority, is to put additional money in for the next capital budget so we could do it after July of next year.
Understood. All right, thank you.
Okay, that's a good question. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Anyone else, Dave?
Nope, that's all.
All right. Thanks for joining us.
Wait, 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 do I have a motion to close?
Oh, sorry. I did it again. Wow.
It's okay. Motion to close.
Punch happy.
Who will make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Thank you. Second.
I will.
Thank you. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes, and thank you again, Joe.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes. All right, now I could say goodnight. So thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Joe, and your staff and Ena and everyone who worked on this. Like I said, people just see the end products. They don't realize the amount of work that goes into developing this and the budget. And it's a huge undertaking for the entire staff. So thank you and we will see you all at the next meeting.
Next meeting is upcoming Tuesday at 7:00 PM, folks.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
All right, have a good one.
Good night, everyone.